Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 27, 2020 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. And everybody's standing but me, so I'll stand and Craig Lynch will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Craig?
Bow with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for all the blessings you've given us today. Heavenly Father, the blessings you will give us, we pray that we'll use those blessings to, for your honor and your glory, Heavenly Father. You give them to us every day and we thank you for that. We pray especially now, Heavenly Father, for our country. We pray for the world. This awful virus that's upon us all, we pray that you will give us some relief, Heavenly Father. We know you can and we just put it all in your hands that you will take care of that situation. Stressful times, Heavenly Father, people do irrational things and stressful times, countries may do irrational things. We pray that you say that the level heads will maintain peace, Heavenly Father, through this time of the stressful situation that we're all in. We pray that you'll just be with us. Pray that you'll be with us this meeting and give us wisdom here today, Heavenly Father, in Christ's name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
High states of America, two to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all. May be seated. I'll remind everyone that this is also a virtual meeting and we have several members and also some others that are attending this meeting via the Internet. So if you would, Gail, please call the roll.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Here.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Yev Akhwar.
Thank you. This time, we need, do we have any minutes to approve, Gail? No? No minutes. You're off the hook, Pettis. We have no items withdrawn or deferred, so we'll get right into our business. Item 6A, these are items submitted for preliminary plan approval. 6A1, item number 20-1005, Saddlewood, 64 lots on 70 acres, zoned, PUD, located along Franklin Road. Tom Moon is the applicant.
Doug? Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you and good morning, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well and those over here and those who are watching from home as well. This property should probably look familiar to everybody here. The rezoning for this property to planned unit development was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in April of 2019. The application was for a residential development, including both single-family attached and detached units. The plan before you also includes three large single-family tracks at the south end of the development, which are not part of the planned development. They are still zoned RM, so I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. The lot totals may make it look like it's more than what the PUD approved, but as far as the PUD itself, the lots are consistent with what was approved. It's those three extra lots in the back that are, again, separate because they're still zoned residential medium density. I did also want to state that the approval of this plan, although you do see the multifamily element, the attached product on the site plan, or the preliminary plan, I should say, if you do approve this today, that will require an additional site plan review. What we're looking at today is for the preliminary plan for the single-family lots. The multifamily ones are more of a site plan type situation. They're together just because the drainage of the site has to work together in that sense, so it has to be shown that way. But I just wanted to make sure that you understood that if you do approve the preliminary plan today, that you will still see the attached product come back as a site plan submittal. We did identify several items with this plan. The engineer and staff have had several conversations getting this consistent with what is shown in the pattern book. I believe they have done that. The comments that we have have been addressed. This plan does appear to be in good order. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or turn it over to Mike if he had anything further on that.
I was good with what they had submitted. We still have to see construction plans and essentially the site plan for the town home, so there's still a little work to be done, but as far as preliminary plan, this is in
Just a quick update, lot sizes as it relates to distance between houses and lot lines?
Yes, sir. This plan is adhering to the minimum standards of our zoning orders as far as a minimum of 15 feet separation.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 20-1005 for Saddlewood. Any other questions or comments? I'm not sure if that was a comment. People who are virtual, I'm going to call for a voice vote and those who are online, I see Chip and Rhonda, if you guys don't approve of it, you can comment in the negative. Does that sound okay to you?
Yes.
Chip? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Very good. I guess we'll call the roll then. Thank you. Thank you. Gail, would you call the roll, please?
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Aye.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes. Here.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Motion carries. Thank you. Motion carries. Item 6B, these are items submitted for final plant approval. 6B1, item number 202030, Clearview Acres, Section 2, re-subdivision of 73 lots, 53 lots on 8.66 acres, zoned, PUD, located along Compass Way. 3BC is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved at the planning commission back in March of 2016. This plat before you today is, excuse me, consistent with the approved plan. We did have comments on this. Those comments have been addressed. This plat does appear to be in good order. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Preliminary was approved in 2016?
Yes, sir.
So it's still good?
Yes, sir. This is, there's already been a section that's been recorded based on that plan, so we're good there.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Thank you, Lee. We have a motion and a second to approve item number 20-2030, Clearview Acres, Section 2, and re-subdivision of Lot 73. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Rhonda Allen. Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 6B2, item number 202031, Buchanan Estates, Section 8, Phase 1, 51 lots on 33.6 acres, zoned, RM, located along Deucenberg Drive. Jones Construction Company is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission back in April of 2018. There were some minor discrepancies between the approved plan and this final plat. Staff did get clarification on that. It's really just some lot line shifts. The number of lots hasn't changed, so we were okay with that. Most of the comments that we identified on this particular plan have been addressed. There was a couple of items on here that we did want to talk about. One of them had to do with the typical building setback detail. Our zoning ordinance allows for what we call an alternate side setback on corner lots, where if they face it, the house, one direction, that's considered their front yard, we give them a little bit more leeway on the corner lot. They can have a reduced setback on the alternate corner. They're saying that they would like to have that in there and they show it on the notes, but the setback detail hasn't been updated and neither have the corner lots on the plat, so they would need to identify which one they want to be the front yard. So, I mean, that's fairly minor. It's easily fixed, but besides that, you're good. Yeah. Engineering is also okay with this plan, so we're comfortable moving this forward with that small tweak to the plan. For that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Have a motion and a second to approve item 20-2031 for Buchanan Estates, Section 8, Phase 1. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Aye.
Carries.
Thank you, Gail. Motion carries. Item 6B3, the item number is 20-2033, Harrison Property Tracks, nine lots on 80 acres, zoned, RL, located along Midland Road. David Harrison is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The applicant would like to divide the tract into nine building lots. Lots 4, 5, and 9 would all have frontage along Midland Road. There are two 50-foot access easements with each accessing three additional lots, which is allowed by our regulations. We did alert the applicant to the fact that a fire hydrant determination would need to be made. They did receive that and it does indicate that a hydrant can be supported at this location. However, there's some question as to whether or not some of those lots in the back would still be within 1,000 feet. The plat in and of itself, as far as planning is concerned, the biggest issues we have, again, just really deal with the fact that some of those lots in the back may still require fire hydrant waiver. If that's the case, they may have to be sprinkled due to that. But I know that Mike's got several comments on this plat, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to him to discuss.
All right. Let's see. They have shown, there's a fork of the Stones River runs through there and there's a major tributary that runs through the property. They have shown the setbacks and they are proposing, let's see if I can get into a little zoom, are proposing a significant box culvert, 312 by 4, T-dot box culvert bridge, right here, crossing that major tributary. So I haven't seen the calculations for that yet. That's a pretty significant drainage structure to allow that much water to flow through there. And then also, let's see. Oh, yes. Lot 1, I need to work with the design engineer, design surveyor, about the minimum building pad elevations and the minimum floor. You can see this is a base flood elevation. Technically, we're not going off the base flood elevation from the FEMA map. We're going off a profile, so I need to confirm with them. But typically, the ground, the floodplain slopes with the ground and you're supposed to set the highest, the most restrictive elevation based on the highest elevation of the water. So if this, in the eastern end of Lot 1, somebody were to build in this location, we would need a higher pad elevation. So these are large lots. They take up a lot of room, so I just need to work with the design engineer, design surveyor on that. And then one of our comments, and I need to go back to my other map. One of the comments, we had some questionable soils on the property. There's some Dalton here, Eghum here. That is really hydric soil, really wet stuff. Let's see, I think there's some Ruelin back here, but that's on the other side, which they're not going to be building on back there. So we'd asked them to do a hydrologic determination about the suitability of the soil and they said they acknowledged, but we've yet to see that. If we go back to the plat, though, I'm sorry, it's it's mostly on the long part of Lot 4, Lot 5, and 9, which there's already an existing house on. So I don't believe they're building in these areas. It's just a wet area that, I mean, somebody could build up here if they had a suitable soil, but I don't think they identify that. I think still that's part of Lot 9, so that's kind of an iffy thing. So really, most of the new lots to the east are not impacted by that hydric soil, so that's not a huge concern. So really, the only other minor thing was this little pond here. It was shown a lot larger on a previous plan and it's, we had a comment about having the flag lot go through that. So it's gotten a lot smaller and they've shown a buffer, but I just need to confirm that that's the true limits of that. Let me turn the map on. So getting over this major tributary is going to be the big, big-ticket item to build these lots in the back. And there's the pond in question. We just need to make sure that the limits that are shown on the plat and what's out in the field dive together. So there's a few issues with this one, but all in all, I believe they've addressed everything
Mike, are these all issues that can be handled inside the office without this coming back to us?
Yes, before the plat is recorded, they still, you know, have to get the state to sign off on the septic systems, the utility providers and Doug's question about fire hydrant coverage. So these are still some things that we need, we can work out, but yet to be done.
How would they do roads and maintaining those roads?
Well, on the plat, I think they're going to have a common driveway that-
A final plat? So thinking and, you know, all these things that are not covered, this is supposed to be finalized?
Well, I mean, as far as the, I mean, these are going to be private access drives, so they're going to have to be maintained by the property owners themselves. I mean, they're going to have, it's not going to be anything we're going to maintain. So that's going to be something that they're going to have to, and there's a, yeah, Mike's looking at number 17 there on your screen.
Ingress, egress, and public utility easements will be maintained by the, essentially every owner of all the lots. So everybody's going to use this common driveway coming through here. And then, you know, I guess they'll branch off to each individual parcel will have their own driveway off of that main driveway.
Is that an HOA?
Right.
Is that going to be a homeowner's?
They'll have to be something to help maintain those, yes. They'll have to establish that, some sort of-
Some kind of deed restriction or something to say that everybody's responsible for maintaining this common driveway.
And back to what Mike was saying, as far as the fire hydrant waiver was concerned, because I think if they had their druthers, they'd like the waiver, but the information from CUD does indicate that a hydrant can be located where that line is out front. Now, like I said, some of those lots in the back would probably still be outside of 1,000 feet, even if you stuck the hydrant right in the front. So I guess it's up to the commission as far as how you want to move forward with that.
But all in all, like I said about the soil, it's on the west side of this major tributary. Nobody's building except a driveway to get back to the lots. I just need to confirm the size of this box culvert, the calculations. I need to see those from the design engineer and then confirm. This is a huge parcel. It's 5.08 acres, so I just need to confirm the limits of that. So in my thoughts, it's, these aren't deal breakers or things that we need to defer. These are just things that we need to get worked out before it gets recorded.
Mr. Chairman, in my part of the country, there used to be an older gentleman, and now that I'm an older gentleman. But I always wondered as a boy, he used to, whenever there was something that sort of bothered him and he had concerns, he would always say, "I'm dubious of this situation." And when I've started looking at this, and since this is out in my district, I started looking at some of this and there are points that's been brought up here this morning that I'm a little dubious of some of these things. I already, this year, have areas within my district that whenever it rains, I get a little concerned because I know my phone's going to ring. Because we've already had homes out there to flood that have been built where we've had problems. I have two subdivisions that started out as just going to be, hopefully, about four, five, maybe six houses in them. They now have 17 houses in them and they all have a common drive. And they immediately start calling, two of these now, wanting that common drive paved by the county. And they want to know, when are you going to get that road paved? Which I have to answer, the county can't do that. That's a private drive. I think that needs to be, we got to do this up front to let these people know, when they take this private drive, they're going to have to have some way to look after that and take care of it and to know what you've got there because you can't come back on your county commissioner and tell him to fix that because he can't. You can't call the road superintendent. He can't. And it can't be done. It's up to you. When you get that deed, it's yours because you've got an easement and that's where it is. And anybody that has property knows, when you get an easement on your property or whatever, you're dealing with something that you have there. All this property has the west fork of the Stones River on it, back over in there. Now, this property right now is being farmed. It is, it's being farmed, but there's a world of difference between farming and building houses and whatever and that's fine. And I appreciate our engineering department is going to take the necessary steps on this, but what I'm saying here is we need to follow this very closely. And if we go this way, that these things that have to deal with water issues, that have to deal with the road issues, we're going to have to make sure that these things are followed to the letter as closely as we can. We got to get the hydraulics in there to make sure that we understand this. I mean, I spent some time in education world on soils and I know that very front part is what Mr. Hughes was talking about there. Yes, sir, that does have some soils that do withhold water. And right now, it's holding water today. So I'm just urging that we take precaution with this for sure, that we follow that fairly close.
Do you have a motion?
No, sir, I don't have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Rhonda Allen. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Let's go back to the soils for a second, Mike. Under the soils legend, the hatch marks describe this as soils are marginally suitable for subsurface sewage disposal system. What does that mean, that it's marginally suitable?
That means the soils that they've identified for the septic system have a longer infiltration rate. The marginal soils have a typically 75 minutes per inch, so a longer time to infiltrate into the ground. So it's not as conducive to a septic system, so you'll need more of it. You need a larger area to satisfy the number of bedrooms that you need. So it's not that it's a hydric soil or anything like that. It's just, it's got a denser molecule makeup that allows water to permeate through it. So these areas that they've hatched, the crosshatching are the marginal soils. And see, the diagonal ones are the better soils, the suitable soils for septic systems.
Right. That's what made me question that because almost all of these are the hatched, not the cross-section. That's fine. And these are large tracks, so I understand what you're saying. So they've got the space to do this. They can still remain within their building envelope and not disturb the septic area. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. They've carved out the building setbacks away from the MBSL, Minimum Building Setback Lines. These are areas that you've got to be at least 10 feet off of your septic system soils.
Okay. And then my other question is for Doug. We keep referring to this as a private drive, but when it's this long and there's this many lots, this is truly a private road. So what, I don't remember the exact number, but I didn't think it was nine of lots that we allowed off of a private road.
You can have up to three lots off of a private easement. Now, they've got multiple easements on here. They still may have like a private drive that serves them all, but when you look at the plat, there's actually two separate 50-foot access easements that have three lots on them, which technically does meet our regulations. Now, if it were just one, and I think the original plat that they submitted actually had something like that, where there was going to be more than the allowable three off of one easement, if I remember right, but they've changed it after discussions with staff. But we've seen situations like this in the past, not very often, but basically, that's how they're doing it. They're getting two separate access easements.
Okay, that feels like an end run around the intent of our ordinance. And I think that's exactly what Pettis and Charlotte were kind of alluding to in terms of, you know, this is going to look and act and function like a road. You know, one of the notes on here says that it's a gravel drive to remain for the benefit of, you know, these tracks. We would never allow a gravel road of this length, so I just, I feel like it's kind of an end run around the intent of the ordinance, the way we have it written.
Well, and again, it may not be, you know, ideal, but what he is doing is technically allowable, so I understand where you're going with them.
Doug or Mike, who will oversee the construction of that structure, that triple-barrel drainage structure?
It will, technically, it's outside of our purview. Our, we will probably, something that large will, you know, require reports from a geotechnical engineer, unless they do prefab, prefabricated structures that they'll drop in place. If they form it on-site, typically, we want to see a geotechnical engineer on-site taking concrete samples and making stress tests and, but, you know, technically, it's outside of the public right-of-way, public roads. We oversee construction of public roads, so we typically do not- So we typically do not...
Another question to follow up with that, who will maintain that structure? Because there are certain criteria where that has to be inspected, being on, say, the west fork of the Stones River. Bear the cost of those inspections or that maintenance of that structure and the long-term maintenance of that. Being on a private easement, that's gonna pose some great challenges.
Well...
Quite expensive.
It will not be the highway department outside of the right-of-way. The state, you might help me there, the state does inspect several bridges in the county. But I don't know if they would inspect this one.
That was my curiosity as well.
I think Stan Vaught, would you like to address the commission, make a few comments? Please come forward. Jamie, you want to back him up? Come on.
This deal sounds like it's kind of going south, and I don't mean to cause any problems. My name's Stan Vaught. I'm auctioneer with Parks Auction Company, former member of this body. And kind of to explain a little bit about this situation, Mr. Harrison that owns this farm came to us about a year ago and said, "Hey," you know, it was time for him to liquidate what, you know, opportunities that he had. And looking at what we have done over the last 30 years in the auction business is, we have created a lot of, and I hate to use this word, Jamie, but mini farms in Rutherford County. There's a lot of folks that don't want to live on a, as some of us would say, a postage-stamped sized lot. And I noticed that y'all approved two of those this morning. And obviously, you know, the more people are concentrated, you know, there's gotta be greater regulations. But what we have been able to figure out over the years in creating 5, 10, 15-acre tracks is that there's a sector of our society that wants to live in the country. They want these large lots. They want four, five-bedroom soil sites where they can build a dream home. They can build maybe a home that has a mother-in-law apartment, something such as that. They want enough land that they can build a shop on if they're a small business owner in the plumbing business here, or they're, you know, a truck farmer that wants a place to put a couple of greenhouses. I could go on and on and on, but I think y'all see what I'm getting at, is that has been a niche market that I have been involved with for over 30 years now. Working with planning over the years, and back when Mr. Davis was here, we did several of these, and we would do, I think the most we ever did on one was probably 18 lots. It was down off Paw Paw Springs Road in Smyrna. And after we did that, when it worked out, and to answer y'all's questions, how we do this is we set up a driveway agreement. We don't do a HOA. People hate HOAs. They're coming out of Williamson County, they've had enough HOAs, they don't want somebody telling them what to do, they don't want to tell them they can't have chickens, they can't have chickens, they can't have goats, they can't have goats. They're timeout. They don't want any of that. They do want the country atmosphere, but what we've been able to figure out is they do want some protection. And so when we take somebody's farm, and Pettis, you've seen us do this over the years, we will generally put some type of restrictions in there. 2,200 square feet on one floor, the shop's gotta look like the house, it may have to be brick, may have to be hardy board. We put some type of assurance in the agreement, in the restrictions, that it protects them as homeowners or buyers. When I first got in the business in 86 and started, the great fear with people is that they would go to the country and they'd buy five acres and they'd build a dream home on this five-acre track, and somebody would, and pardon me for saying it this way, drag in a single wide used mobile home that was up on, didn't even have, you know, the tires were still on it. And so we have been able to develop this over the years. And what we have learned out of this is that we've gotta get an engineer involved with it. We've got to design the driveway to make it easy for these people to maintain. When I was on the planning commission, there was a notorious gentleman that would come out of Davidson County down here, and he would run a gravel road back on a big piece of land. And one of those is out on Franklin Road right now, and I'm sure most of y'all know where it is. And he would tell everybody, "Oh, once you buy this, the county will run a highway back there to you. They'll build a road to you." And Willard Richardson and I had to be the bearer of bad news on several of those situations throughout the county, that it was not only, not the county's responsibility, they weren't going to fix it and they weren't gonna do it. Of course, they had choice words for their county commissioner at that point in time, and also that sorry real estate agent Pettis that sold them that land. So anyway, going forward, we have learned from those mistakes that other people have made. We've done several of these in the last, y'all have approved several of these in the last couple of years for us. Notably, the last two were out at the Toon Farm in Eagleville. Both of those were four-acre tracks. When we came up with this, my alternative for Mr. Harrison was to sell it for an 80-lot, 90-lot, 100-lot subdivision. Put it on a step system, crowd that driveway right there out to the road. All those kids would either have to go to Christiana Elementary or come back to the New Rock Vale School. Here again, this is one of those tracks of land that really lends itself to doing the large lot subdivision on it. And so this was the proposal we made. We sat down with Doug and Mike back in the fall and kind of drew this out on a piece of paper. I said, "I don't want to pull any punches on the planning commission. I want y'all to understand going into this, I'm gonna do two of these, four of them, laid back-to-back. But what I'm gonna do is create one driveway agreement where all eight people share and share alike in building of that driveway and keeping that driveway up." And so that's what we've done here. To address the hydraulics on that one track, that's Steve's, excuse me, that's David's house, and he's gonna keep it for the time being right now. There's not any suitable soil on that other than where his septic tank is right now that's on the...
South side of the house.
Yes, right there on the south side of the house. So everything we have done has been on the east side of that tributary right there. And we realize, we've had Jamie and his staff, they have sized that pipe. We've met with a couple of suppliers. We actually think, Mike, that maybe two or three, five foot, six foot, something. We think we can do it with pipes. Yes, yes. That's what Mike Bryant, Bryant Construction's gonna put the driveway in for us. We're gonna do it and do it right. At the end of it, once we sell them, we will give the homeowners, those eight homeowners to share and share alike. If they want, once their houses are built, if they want to come back and pave it, they can come back and pave it. They can put up, you know, a nice, we're gonna put up a nice plank entrance going into it. I think we decided to call it Midland Farms or something like that. But I don't want the parents that, myself, you know, I've staked my reputation on this the last 30 years in creating these small communities that are different than, you know, your regular 8,000, 10,000, 15,000 square foot lots. This is a huge market for us personally, but for Rutherford County, I think it gives us a very diverse citizenry, you know, between me that owns a couple hundred acres out in the county and some guy that's living in a condo. This is an opportunity for people to raise their kids, have an opportunity to, you know, have a show goat, have a show cow, raise chickens, raise a garden. And I don't have to tell y'all what's happened in the last six weeks to us. Our phone is ringing off the hook right now for people starving for a place to build a house right now away from everybody else, to have a little protection, to have a little solitude, to be able to build that farm shop or that place to store their RV or whatever. So anyway, I know I'm rambling on now, and I don't mean to, but I wanted to try to touch base with y'all as to how we arrived at this point. And this is a guideline, I think, Doug, that was developed probably after I left the planning commission, because we could still do several, we could do more than four. But the proposal came back to us as realtors and auctioneers and said, "Hey, the state guideline says we can do three. Isn't that right? We can do three." And what y'all have been able to do for us, if we came forward and said, "Hey, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna plat it," y'all have allowed us to do four. And so all I've done here is lay two of these back-to-back, but I'm gonna have one driveway agreement to service all eight of those people. So forgive me for saying that, but I don't want you to think that we're trying to sneak something through or do an end-to-run or anything like that, because that is not our intention at all. It's to create this concept and create an opportunity for other people in this county to own acreage tracks.
Thank you, Stan.
Stan, so that one driveway is going to encompass two of those easements, I suppose? It's gonna be in the middle?
Yes. What it does with having the two 50 feet, we're gonna go ahead and install the water lines in. And to talk about this, we had, I think there's a note, or supposed to be a note, "We're gonna do them as sprinkled houses," because they are so far back in there, the hydrant on the road is really not gonna do us any good. If y'all want us to put it in, we'll put it in. I don't think it needs to be there, because I think we end up sprinkling them, it takes care of that. But that 100 feet gives us a little opportunity to move the road, curve the road just a little bit, and give us plenty of opportunity or width to put the eight water lines in as we go back through there. Because CUD, they will not let us put a public line in on a private easement. So they all have to be maintained lines going back in there. So everything coming from the road is privately maintained. No cost to the county, no cost to the highway department or CUD.
Stan, these roads will remain gravel?
We will give, we will start with them as gravel pedestals for construction purposes, but we will put in the driveway agreement that they have the opportunity for all eight of them to go together and pave it. And most of the time, once the construction has been done, that's what people have elected to do. Because you're, these people, these buyers that we deal with here, they're fixing to invest somewhere between a half a million and a million bucks in these home sites. And so this is a totally different, we're hitting a different plateau up here. These people are building 3,000, 4,000 square foot houses. You know, they're, they will probably pave it. You know, we could put it in there if y'all think that that's what we need to start doing, is to put a mechanism in place that once, you know, 75% of the houses are built, that the road, the driveway, private driveway would be paved, that's something we can address in that driveway agreement.
Well, and the reason I'm saying this, you know, what I have dealt with recently, I've had those kind of houses that have been built...
I'm trying to remember which one you're dealing with right now.
Well, one of them, Udon, and they have built some really nice homes out in there.
It's where?
Udon, right in front of my house. And they have built some nice houses.
I remember who did, I remember who did that, yes.
Yeah, you know who did that. But they have built some very nice houses, very nice people in there. And they have come and said, "Well, when can the county, the county can't do that."
Right.
And you have to go through that explanation. You know, when you have a time lapse from the time that everybody has a good feeling in whatever, from the time when most of the houses have been built, and then all of a sudden, everybody can't get the understanding...
Everybody's memory is short.
Everybody's short.
That's probably a better way to do it.
And then all of a sudden, you've got a gravel road that goes in there, and it's not raining like it is now, but it's hot and dry, and all of a sudden, all this dust is rolling. And you've built a nice Olympic-sized cement pond in the back.
Yes.
And it's filling full of dirt.
Right.
And they're wanting that paved. And then they want somebody to pave it, and then all of a sudden, they find out what that cost. It's a different thing.
Yes.
And I think if we take care of these problems at the front now...
Yeah, and then not overstep you, but that, I think that's one reason that when Doug, and I'm gonna blame this on you, when you came up with this idea of, "Let's do four, let's create the plat, let's put all the notes on the plat where everybody remembers." We were doing it that a way. We were doing what we referred to as a recorded survey, and that's what everybody was transferred. All buyers were disclosed, all disclosures were made then. Doug took it a step further, I think, in making us plat it. And so it kind of follows the guidelines of the planning commission. So that way, nobody can say, "Well, I didn't know it."
Well, that's why I'm bringing this up right here, is that I have run, all the problems I have run into are late problems that should have been taken care of at the early beginning. And like the water problems we're having, if they had been taken care of at the early beginning, what I've run into with the flood problems we're having now in some houses, we've got people that are buying houses sight unseen. They're calling from California, they're calling from Georgia, they're calling from everywhere else. They're buying these half-million-dollar houses. They get here, they get there on Saturday, and Sunday night, they flood. And then all of a sudden, they don't call the realtor, they call me.
No, you're right.
It's my fault.
They can't find us. See, we blocked them or something. I'm saying "we" as a member of that industry.
So what I'm saying is, and here, I'm sitting here, I said, "Well, let's take care of these problems up front and see if we can fix them." And that's why when the chairman said, "You want to make a motion?" I said, "No, I want somebody to talk about this and see what we can do to fix it." And that's my whole thing in this.
No, point, and point very well taken. We have discussed that, is that do we put in that driveway agreement? And here again, we avoid the HOA for the reasons stated, but what we've realized over, you know, 20, 25 years doing this, we got to establish a driveway agreement where nobody can beg off and nobody say, "Hey, you know, we put the mechanism in there, you know, we designate one lot, says they're in charge of it. If they relinquish it, it goes to this lot number. They collect the money every year, they meet with the contractor to grade the driveway." And what we have put in there is that if 75% of the lot owners want to pave it or concreted at the end of the construction period, then that's what they do. You know, if the planning commission feels strongly about that, I think my suggestion would be is that, you know, you mandate that, you know, because it's an after the fact, and then we as realtors, I as an auctioneer, I'm gonna disclose that, you know, whether that money is escrowed up front or it's, the mechanism is put in there that it becomes a lien on the property. I think you could fix it either way to do that. But if this body deemed that necessary, I can see great validity in that. Let's put it that way.
Stan, those houses on Loveren Road, on the end of Loveren Road, are they, did those homeowners pave that or is that, or is that a county road? Sort of same type of situation here, isn't it?
You talking about going down to Preacher Gentry's place? Or no, the other one?
Loveren Road.
Now, see, that was one of kind of the first ones we did. We, I kind of, and I didn't do that when I advised the guy that did it. And that was, that was, I think, when the planning commission decided, because they didn't pave it, because they didn't put the mechanism in place, we did it Paw Paw Springs, but they didn't there at Loveren. It creates a little bit of an ill will among neighbors.
Mike, is that, is that a county road or did those homeowners...
No, it's only a county road to the milk barn, where the milk barn was.
I think that's right.
Okay, so there's some, there's some big homes on the end of that.
Yeah, they were, you're talking about. Kind of same concept, same tributary, same everything. I laid that out for that guy. He was out of Loveren that did that. Anyway, he built that road, and that's how it turned out. But he didn't put a mechanism in place to address the driveway. He just put the road in and said, "See you." And I don't, me personally, I don't think that's the right way to do business, but I can't be very critical of my fellow realtor right now. I want to be, but I'm not gonna be.
Mr. Vaught?
Yes.
I must say, with all due respect to your professionalism and dedication to this county for so many years, and I think your heart is absolutely in the right place, I must, I gotta say that I agree with Rhonda and that I see this driveway situation and this easement as an end run around the rules. Yeah, it does, I think in this particular case, it does meet our requirements. But at what point do we stop and this becomes 12-lot subdivision and then a 15-lot subdivision by doing the same thing?
And point well taken, and that was the reason I sat down with Doug and Mike on the front end. I didn't want anybody to think we were doing an end run. I wanted it kind of on the front end, hey, this is what, because, you know, I could have been a smart aleck and brought it up here and got them to sign off, "We, let's do four this year, let's come back and do four next year, let's come back and do four the next year." That's the problem they're having in Williamson County right now. But see, they don't plat them. And that's the beauty about doing this, is that this is platted, and if any adjustment is made to that plat, Jim, then they've got to come back to you guys to adjust that plat. I guess that's the only, that's the only saving grace in this particular situation.
And if I can just kind of dovetail into what Stan was just talking about, I will say, he did come in and talk with us first. And he's absolutely right, you know, two easements next to each other, and we told them that meets our regulate, that is legal. There isn't anything necessarily wrong with that. So, I mean, what he's telling you is, I just wanted to reiterate, what he's telling you is accurate.
Sure. And I agree. I don't see that there's anything here that is against our regulations in this particular case. I think my point is gonna be is, maybe there's a hole in the... I think my point is gonna be is, maybe there's a hole in the way that we've written our regulations. Because here, we're loading the entrance to this neighborhood for nine homes off of one entrance on a road, and it's heavier traffic, it's heavier wear on the road, it's dragging more gravel out into the road. You know, I just, I just think if we see a lot of this, it's not gonna work out well. And now we're opening the door to it. Like I say, in this particular case, I think it's legal, but I think we're gonna have to address that in our regulations somehow.
And I think that's something we can start looking into.
I think the planning guidelines that y'all have adopted, we've adopted over the years, it is what people would say, a living, breathing document. We've gotta adjust on the fly as to what consumers are wanting, and what they demand, and what society is deeming that people do. We've been, in real estate business, we've been for years and years concentrating, 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 and then we come in with something that's totally different, let's spread out. Is that a good use of land? I don't know. I know there's a market there, I know there's people probably sitting in this room, that if I gave them a choice, you wanna live in a condo, or you wanna live in a house on five acres, there's gonna be people that picks both. And that's always been a challenge in our industry, is trying to create that product for everybody. And everybody's got an individual taste.
Jamie, if you'd just follow up on some of the comments that Mike had about your commitment.
If y'all got any technical questions for me, I just want also, this subdivision that Stan's talking about, the eight lots that's off these two roads, we've got nine that's got a separate drive. This is just north of Staghorn Subdivision, that's 100 and something lots. I don't know if y'all knew that. So this is the, there's a lot of lots just south of that, the drainage is still coming through there, but from a drainage standpoint, like alluded to Mike earlier, we've already done the cogs, the hydraulics and stuff, that box covert. Unfortunately, it's, it needs that type of area to go through there to be maintained. And we were looking at also, not just the bridge, I think y'all were going back and forth, but possibly several large round pipe culverts through there as an option to be And the profiles on that lot, one minor comment, Mike.
I mean, that's-
A lot of these comments are very, very minor, and it's just how you look at the profile. What we've done in the past, or started to do here recently, instead of looking at what FEMA plots out, the little zigling lines on there, the 100-year floods, we go back and we're actually looking at the profile, where the profile is actually cut and studied, and that's what you're seeing on some of those. And Mike's alluding to the far right of that lot, if I'm not mistaken, east side of that lot, to review some more. But we can look at it. But these comments are minor in nature for me, from a technical standpoint. So if there's any questions, this is just a gravel drive to serve eight lots, fairly minor, so from a technical standpoint. I don't know if y'all got any other thing, other questions or drainage. There's one big drainage system that kind of splits through this property at the box covert location. Everything else kind of drains down to that box. So, you got one for me? Okay. Any other questions for me, freshen out?
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Stan.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna stand up on this, I gotta stand up. You asked me a while ago if I wanted to make a motion, and as Mr. Reed just said here, he mentioned the fact of Staghorn. Staghorn is just up the road from it. They have not built a house yet within that subdivision that I'll mention here. But, and the reason, I guess I brought all of this up, or what I said, you know, I take this, where I'm at right now, very seriously, and what we do here in this county, and I think we all do, sitting in here, and on the video, and what we do, and what we're going here. And as we get further into what we do, and as land sites become less and less, we're gonna have to do this more and more, because we've got to be careful with what we have left. And I do appreciate the fact that these lots that we have in this particular development right here are larger lots. It's something that, being an old farm boy, I appreciate, that I do understand there are people now wanting larger areas to, something people don't understand right now, it's hard to even find garden seed right now. Everybody's pulling for garden seed, they're growing gardens, because of the concern we have right now with this pandemic. And they wanna go back to gardening and doing things like that. But, you know, I appreciate that, that they're gonna make these lots larger, rather than we putting houses closer together. And I think I got some of my answers right here, as far as the road is concerned, but in this area out there, for this development, I'm the one, I guess, will catch the heat of some of this, if something goes wrong, whatever. And excuse me, Mike and Doug, if I did bring up some things here that could cause some heat, but I just think it's important that if I don't say it, somebody might not say it. And I'd rather say it now than what we done there. And I'm gonna make a motion, and I'm gonna make a motion for us to go ahead and approve this, but we're gonna put in stipulations. Stipulations to do exactly what we have said right here, that those things be said in there, some regulation placed in there that the people do understand, that as they make this development go forward, that the people understand that what they're to do with that road, what they're to do as far as that development is concerned. And so I guess I'm making a motion to approve with staff comments and with comments from here today.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 20-2033 Harrison Property. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Sure.
I don't disagree with anything that Mr. Vaught said in terms of the lot size, but I don't think that approving this the way it's been presented is mutually exclusive from what his goals are. Everything that he said confirms that this is a development. You won't need an HOA if they build this to be a public road, so that issue goes away. You will have your Vaught's covert inspections that we're concerned about, if you build that to be a public road. The price point that you're talking about for these lot sizes, that to me seems like the only reason you would do it this way, which is, that your concern is that it would be cost prohibitive. But if you're selling, you know, million dollar investments, then again, I feel confident that you could pass that amount of money on to that landowner, that buyer. So from that standpoint, I don't see anything in this design, or in any of the comments that have been shared, that lead me to believe that this is anything other than a development. So when it comes time to vote, I'm gonna vote against this.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Penyon.
No.
Greg Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Eddis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. 6C, this is an item submitted for a site plan approval, 6C1, item 20-3003, Burnt Knob Self-Storage, Construction of 5,400 square feet of mini storage facility space on 10.9 acres zoned light industrial located along Burnt Knob Road. Stuart Conway is the applicant. Before we get into this, I'll remind everyone that this was an item that created a lot of discussion at our February 24 meeting, and was deferred. And since we didn't have this nine o'clock meeting last month, it was deferred to this month. So this is an item that was deferred from back in February. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. Just a little bit of history on this, we talked about this just a little bit at the last meeting back in February, but just as a reminder, the applicant originally zoned the larger of the two tracks, and you see on the map on your iPads, or even on the screen, the big screen in front of us, Mike's highlighting the larger track of land. That was the first property that the applicant had rezoned, I believe back in 2015, 2015, 2016-ish, and he had it zoned to light industrial. In 2016, we did see a site plan for the development of that particular tract. The original site plan that was submitted showed a pretty substantial amount of cut, especially when you got toward the rear of the property, upwards of 55 to 60 feet. That plan was deferred, and essentially, the Planning Commission felt that, and staff as well, felt that that was just too much cut for the type of development that they were wanting to do on the property. So they went back, they kind of redid the site plan and brought it back to the Planning Commission. Still a pretty substantial amount of cut, but not nearly like it was, about 20 feet is what it ended up being. That site plan was approved, again, that was back in 2016. Now, site plans are valid for 18 months unless a building permit is pulled. Once a building permit is pulled and is active, the approval of site plan at that point kind of locks in, in a sense. So, site plan was approved, no building permits were ever obtained for the development of that site plan. Fast forward to last year, 2019, the applicant purchased the property immediately next to the original property, and that's the smaller of the two that Mike has highlighted on there. Now, that was just last year, and that also was rezoned to light industrial, similar to the larger tract. Again, no work had been done on the previous site plan, that site plan had been allowed to expire. Now that plan has been brought back to us, incorporating the entire property, both properties, if you will. And the applicant has submitted a grading plan that shows it back up to about a 50 to 55-foot cut when you get toward the back of the property. So that was a lot of the discussion that was had, that Mr. Phillips was referring to just a little bit ago, regarding the property, as far as the amount of cut, the safety issues involved, and those kind of things. The applicant was present at that meeting, he's present here today, as well as his design engineer, Mr. Huddleston. Staff has had several discussions about this with the applicant, with the applicant's engineer as well. And quite frankly, our feelings haven't changed, as far as the fact that we still feel that for the type of development that he's wanting to place on this property, this is still a substantial amount of cut, that there are ways to get this done without having to have that much cut removed from the property. Now, the applicant has stated, and I'm sure he'll, given the opportunity, he'll come up and speak to this in more detail, but he has other sites, not necessarily in the county, but in the city of Murfreesboro, where he had indicated that some of this material was going to be brought from this site to there to help with some other developments that he has going on right now. Staff's concern at the last meeting, I mean, really all along, as well as in this meeting right here, has always been that it appears that the primary use of this property moving forward is a borrow pit type operation, which we do have regulations for that, and we have indicated that to the applicant's design engineer and the applicant, and say, "If that's really what you wanna do with this property, there are ways to get that done, although you probably wouldn't be able to get as much done as far as the amount of material taken out based on the county's regulations." We talked about that at the last meeting, as far as the regulations not really anticipating smaller sites like this, they were designed really with larger sites in mind. So, that's just some introductory comments on this. It was deferred at the last meeting in order for the applicant to obtain a geotechnical study. There were some concerns brought up regarding the Rogers Group quarry immediately to the north of this subject property. That study was completed and given to staff. The study did make some recommendations, and again, I'm sure the applicant will speak to this if given the opportunity. Some of those recommendations have not been made a part of the engineered plan, and we'll have more discussion on that as we move forward with that. Staff also has concerns about the amount of, the viability of the remaining landscaping on this subject property, as far as buffering. You know, from a buffering standpoint, since this would be an industrial use next to residential zone property, they would have to have a type 3 buffer, which is a pretty substantial buffer. They show the distance, but as far as the maintenance of that, and the effect that the blasting and the amount of cut it's gonna have on that material, is, I just have my concerns and doubts of the viability of some of that material. But with that, that just gives you some introductory comments on this. Mike, I didn't know if you had anything further you wanted to get into right now, but-
Yeah, I can talk about comments needing to be addressed. Okay, let's see. We had made a comment about their proposing to do Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the buildings, but they are only showing, they are showing a phase line for the buildings, but not a phase line for the grading. It's still showing the overall grading for Phase 1, for the overall site, showing everything being excavated. We'd asked that they evaluate the next two downstream structures, they did evaluate the one under Burnt Knob, but we need, as it continues farther south, we need to have them to evaluate that. Let's see. And we, the big thing is, I'd ask them to adjust the site and grading plan to reflect the overburden slope, and these are terms that come out of the geotechnical report, the bench, the pre-split rock wall slope, and the catchment area. The catchment area, and I'll show you, and there's probably more information you wanna know about, about borrow pits and rock quarries and pre-split walls. So, they are essentially utilizing a T-dot detail, showing how things are gonna be addressed. And if this thing will cooperate. So, the catchment area is essentially where rock on a pre-split wall, it's pretty vertical, if it were to fall off the rock off the face and then down, it needs an area to catch the rock. In their plan, they're still showing the drive aisles in this catchment area. This little dashed area is where rock could fall in, off the face of this wall. And like we've said before, in the back, you've got 55 feet of cut, just a straight-up-and-down wall with a bench. Another thing, the geotech report recommends 15 feet, at least 15 feet wide, and they do note that here, but they're still showing a 10-foot-wide bench in here. And in my research, T-dot is getting away from the benched, pre-split walls, because it becomes a launching pad for rocks that fall off the face of the wall. Now, they did have TTL do a geotechnical report like we asked, but unfortunately, they did not confer with staff about that. So, they showed three boring locations. I had hoped, if, with the public being involved, if this was just a quarry or a borrow pit, three would be fine, but since you're adding the human element into this, I think we need to have more than just three locations. They're showing one at the north end, as you can kind of see on the plan, and then one on either edge. If I had my druthers, I would love to see more along this, the deeper cut to the north. They took note of the water level in some of the holes, but they didn't investigate water movement. You know, where is the water moving? One of the things that you have to be very concerned about with pre-split walls is how groundwater reacts to these walls. Walls freeze and thaw, the water seeps out, freezes, thaws, and that's where you get the rock break off, a lot of times that fall on the highways and interstates. So, that was one of my areas of concern. Through the report, and I'm sorry, I've got a lot to talk about, but they do- Through the report, and I'm sorry, I've got a lot to talk about, but they do show, as you go deeper with the bores, the rock improves. The rock at the top has a lot of what's called overburden and soil layers mixed together. So, it's, what they're having to do is, what they recommend is, on the state detail, is sloping that weathered rock, overburdened slope back, not have a pre-split wall. And I'll show you on some of the details. There's a lot of information involved. Here is boring, these are core samples that they've taken from each one, and these are photographic evidence. So, starting at the top, you know, you've got rock and dirt mixed together, you know, over time, it was formed like that. But as you go deeper and deeper, the rock improves, you know, and gets better. But what you have to be concerned with is the rock on the top that falls, that potentially falls on the people below or buildings below. So, and here's more, as you go deeper, it's got listings of the quality, you know, it's fair, it's, some sections are very poor, some sections are good. And as you get to the bottom, it becomes excellent. So, it's the weathering of the rock at the upper surfaces that gives us pause, the groundwater movements through those layers of rock. And the rock, the geotechnical report was done by TTL out of Nashville, and I have the high respect for them, but like I said, I wish we had had more bore holes on the deeper ends, the higher rock cuts. Let's see. Now, they did say in here, the report states, "Once the final slopes configured has been achieved, the cut slope face should be scaled," that's to remove all the loose pieces, "to reduce the potential for rock-falling hazards." And that's stuck in my mind, you know, rock-falling hazards. We're mixing, you know, people into an area that traditionally, this is along interstates, you know, but they're set back very far, they're used in quarries, just to the north, the Rogers Group quarry, where they don't allow people to get close to these rock walls. I spent a lot of this weekend looking at to what's MNSA, Mine Safety and Health Administration, they're the OSHA equivalent that oversees mines, quarries, and large excavations, which this project, if approved, would be getting away from those regulations. There's, if you look up high wall safety and Google that, there's list after list after list of injury and fatalities of rocks falling on workers. And these quarries are heavily, heavily regulated, they are, they have safety managers, that is their job. They go around and inspect the walls daily to show, look for cracks, look for scaling, look for talus, the parts that fall down and build up on the base or the, or a bench. So, I could go on and on, but it's essentially very concerning to mix a human element into a quarry setting. It's, let's see, water seepage, that's something that has to be addressed, that's what a safety manager would look at, look, going around and looking at the quarry wall, I'm looking at the walls of the commission chambers here, and, you know, they have to notice where water's seeping in, because in the winter months, it freezes and thaws, like I said. The, and like this earlier statement, to reduce the potential for rock-falling hazards, that just stuck in my head, and I was looking at the MNSA rules and regulations, they have whole websites, volumes of regulations that they have to go to. A 3-inch cube of rock falling 50 feet has kinetic energy of 125-foot pounds. So, I mean, a small rock just falling that far can ruin somebody's day. I mean, it could, it really hurt somebody, kill somebody, I mean, just a 3-inch rock. So, I believe that this plan, as shown, it's against our performance standards for prohibition of dangerous and objectionable elements. They can still, like Doug stated before, they came to us with the earlier parcel with 60-foot cut. We told them that's unacceptable, they came back and benched and worked on the design and came up with a 20-foot cut. So, they could still develop it, and you approve that as was shown back April of 2016. But some of the other things that give me pause, and is actually shown in the report, they've started removing material out of here. That is shown in this element, you could see a lot of cut going on in there. So, this is without permits, without land disturbances, without erosion control measures, without an approved valid site plan. This was shown up, we put a stop work order, let's see, February of this year, and we noted, no land disturbance permit, no approved site plan, over an acre of land disturbed, no EPSC measures, you know, you could see a lot of dirt and rock mix, no approved current site plan. And we also have a lot of photographs. So, this has been going on, a lot of materials leaving this site already without an approval, without grading permits. So, that gives me pause. But as a way it's presented, I have some serious concerns about safety. I mean, if, like I said, if you want to research MNSA, Mine Safety and Health Administration, just incident after incident after incident of workers being hurt or killed, they have special rules about how you can work around, how you can drive around these, these pre-split walls. They, you know, make sure that the driver is away from, you know, has, if you're driving towards a wall, your, the majority of your vehicle's supposed to be on the side between you and the wall. If you have to stop and park your vehicle, you're supposed to park with, where you get out away from the wall. So, it's an ongoing, ongoing risk, and I just, I have serious concerns about the long-term safety of a pre-split wall and the proximity of these storage units. You know, you have the public coming here, if you have a person that comes to a storage unit, a rock falls down, hurts or kills them, it might be a long time before they're discovered because there's nobody working here. It's an unmanned facility. You just, you punch your code in, you go in, and that's a concern for me. But...
Mike, I've got some notes that relate to some of the questions, in addition to yours, that the commissioners had, we had, the committee had, and just to mention several of them. Number 1 is, we wanted these answers before it came back to us. What is the intention for the cut material? Number 2, will it be processed? Number 3, who is doing the grading, excavation, and material removal? Who's doing that? And number 4, where is the material going? So, we had some questions that we wanted answered coming back to this meeting, and I'm just wondering if those have been addressed to the staff or at this point in time?
Well, we had, at the last meeting, the way it's presented right now, they're proposing upwards of 300,000 cubic yards of material being removed. And one of the things that we had said early on, that, you know, that site plan's only good for 18 months, and that's going to be a challenge to take that much material off-site, you know, take it from one area and, you know, excavate it and haul it off. It's going to be a challenge, and I'm not saying it's impossible, but it's going to be a challenge. And I did a little math, if you assume a truck can carry 15 cubic yards, a standard dump truck, 15 cubic yards, and 300,000 divided by 15 cubic yards is upwards of 20,000 truckloads of material have to leave the site. If you assume that they work nonstop, 365 days a year, that's 55, that's no weekends, no holidays, no nothing, that's 55 truckloads a day. That's a pretty big operation to get that much material out of there in 12 months.
So, some of these questions that we had, this commission had, have they been addressed? Like, what's the intent, where's it going, will it be processed, those type of things? Have they been answered?
Well, when we were at the last, back in February, and the applicant spoke to some of these, as far as where the material was going to go, he does have sites in the city that he's trying to develop, and did indicate that some of that material, I don't know if all of it, but some, at least some of that material was going to go to those other sites that were in the city to help him develop those. And I don't, he's here, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but, you know, he seemed to indicate, and correct me obviously if I'm wrong, but he indicated, you know, he would kind of use that material as his other projects were going along, so, you know, as one project needed some, he takes some off, if another project needed, he takes some more. That's kind of the impression that I was left with at the last meeting. So, that's a lot of material. Now, is he planning on selling some of that or giving some of the material away? That's a question that the applicant would have to answer. As far as who's going to be actually doing the work, or, you know, as far as what their operation's going to look like, we don't have that information. And I mean, quite frankly, that's not something we typically would ask just on the front end anyway, but for something like this, with that amount of material, you know, based on the applicant's statement that he feels he could have this done in 12 to 20, or 12 to 18 months, I think, is what his timeframe was, that he had mentioned to us in the meeting, I mean, that's, I think that's information that'd be good to know, because that's a, like Mike has just given you the math for, that's a, that's a lot of activity leaving that site.
Okay. You guys want to hear from the applicant?
I'd like to ask Mike, Mike, if it was called a borrow pit, would those walls have to be staggered or are they straight?
You could do it a number of ways. We don't have a set rule on that. We do require that they come up with a reclamation plan, a way to stabilize this once the excavation has been completed. So, there has to be some way to ensure that it's not a danger to humans or wildlife or whatnot, and it's not an open scar on the landscape.
If he wanted to call us a borrow pit, what would his steps be?
Borrow pit applications are handled through the Board of Zoning Appeals, through a special exception. They're handled in Chapter 11 of the ordinance, there's actually a list of criteria that they have to abide by. One of those is the amount of area being disturbed. It's broken down, I think it's, if it's, if you're 10 acres or more, you're limited to so much, if you're under 10 acres, you're limited to a different amount. In neither case would he be able to get the amount of material that he's asking for out of this site plan like he has it presented. He could get some, but he wouldn't be able to get what he's asking for out of this. But to answer your question, they go to the BZA.
You guys want to hear from the applicant? I'm assuming that the applicant or representative of the applicant is here, if you'd please come forward, I believe that's Mr. Conway. Mr. Conway, we, the last time we talked, back in February, there were some concerns that this commission wanted addressed, and let me just kind of walk you through those things at one particular time. I'm not sure it's all that important to this commission that you answer the concerns that staff has, but at least answer the concerns that this commission has. Number 1, what is the intent for the cut material? What is your intent? Will it go to fill some exclusively your property, or are you going to sell some of that? What is your intent?
Good morning. My intent on the property is to use the material to benefit my other developments. You know, the reason we didn't go for a borrow pit, because that's not my goal on this property. You know, my goal is to do storage, that's my business, and that's what I plan to do on this site. As far as a material concern is going, we want to benefit. I'm filling another property right now, so, you know, I'm going to get, fill material somewhere, so having the benefit of giving it, getting it on my own, from my own property, and at the end of the day, have a, another unusable piece of property, basically worthless piece of property, developed into another storage facility to add to my portfolio would be, you know, that's the goal, that's what we strive and achieve for. Going back over the 12 trailing months, as far as the amount of material that we haul on my Warrior site, it would take 17.82 months to complete this entire site, based off the past data that we have for the past 12 months. So, I gave a 12 to 24-month timeframe, and I like to under-promise and over-deliver, so, you know, in February meeting, I said 12 to 24 months, and that, you know, 18-month period is right in the middle, and that's at a slow pace, we can actually double our pace on that, so, and plus the awesome...
Before you, not to cut you off, I'm sorry, but can you go into a little detail as far as, because the numbers that Mike was talking about earlier versus what you're saying, I mean, that's pretty wide discrepancy. Can you go into a little bit more how you came up with your calculations, just for our benefit and for the commission?
Yeah, based on the data for the last 12 trailing months, based off our daily average load, that's the numbers we based it off of, so...
You're basing it off of 15 cubic yards per dump truck?
Oh, yes, yes, sir, yeah.
With that same amount of material, the 280,000, 300,000?
Right. Yeah, we're not processing the material, we legally can't process it, we have no intention to process, obviously, we can't legally. So, it's just, you know, the excavation, and then, you know, when we have to blast, we bring the blaster in, we follow all state guidelines and regulations as we do on any other project.
So, you're saying you're going to have 15, no, what'd you say, 55?
What's that?
55 dump trucks a day, leaving that site, based on your numbers?
Well, to get it in 12, 12 months, you'd need 55 dump trucks a day, 365 days straight.
Well, we average 49.36 loads per day, based on a 5-day work week, which we actually work 5 and 1/2, so I've actually lowered that number, and that's 17.82 months for the amount of material that has to be removed.
If I came up with that, if I said 250 working days, that's taken out for weekends, I came up with 80 dump truck loads a day. But needless to say, that's a lot, a lot, a lot of material. If this were part of a quarry, like what's on the screen... If this were part of a quarry, like what's on the screen, and we were taking 300,000 cubic yards of material, and I know this isn't a quarry, it's not going to be processed, but that, if it were to be processed, that's 15 cents a ton would equate upwards of almost $100,000 of revenue that the county wouldn't be getting if it were a quarry, if it were processed, but it's not. So that's a tremendous, a tremendous amount of material. So I'm, I'm still thinking you can do what you want, you know, put the many storage, but we need something that's not as drastic of a cut. Do you know how much material you need for your Warrior Drive?
We're going to use about 50% of this material on the Warrior Drive site.
Right. Where's the remaining?
We have sites right now that we have agreements on, and so by the time that 50% is exhausted, we should be able to roll forward. Now, the key is on this, the grade, so as I mentioned in the February meeting, you know, a larger percent of material is being removed along the northern section of this property. So if for some reason that another property didn't work out, then I could still pull building permits for Phase 1 prior to the full excavation of the 10.9 acres. And again, I'm taking a worthless piece of property and giving a tax base for the county, so, you know, you speak upon the loss in revenue for the material. I mean, I'm getting the material from another site anyway, so I'm getting material, period, but at least I get a benefit to be able to develop another property in a storage facility.
I personally just can't get over the safety aspect of it.
And if I may, after the February 24th meeting, I actually made a media call to our TTL Geotech, and we, I let him run with what he thought was appropriate for the site as core drills. He's actually here if we need to hear from him, but the report came in, as expected, everything. There was no short-term or long-term safety issues with the proposed site plan.
That's not the way I read it, but Mark had come and talked to us about that. I just, it's an ongoing maintenance issue. I mean, you just can't build it and walk away from it. It's an ongoing.
If I may, my wife's a native, and I've been here for 18 years, and I plan to be a long-term Rutherford County resident. I intend to have multiple businesses here. I'm a third-generation small business owner. My family's history goes way back to development and construction. This is just not a borrow pit, it's not, it's a storage facility development, and that's what we do, that's what I have experience in. And so, you know, I'm just not a fly-by-night operation. I'm a resident, I plan to be here, you know, we're MTL alum, you know, I'm part of this community, and I just ask support, you know, and I'm doing things that I'm asked of with the Geotech report, and we, you know, that was an extensive report that we completed on that upon the request of the committee. And I appreciate your questions, and I try to answer as honestly as I can.
Some of the, some of the materials has already been removed. Who removed that? Did your company remove it, or did another company remove it, or? And where did that go?
In the February meeting, I stayed as a third party. I actually have an agreement, kind of a partnership, with a crew that I use from my hometown in Kentucky. We've been doing business, our families have been doing business together for 25 years. They're three generations working on their team, and we have a great working relationship. And so we partner together, we do great work together, and that's the crew that I use. And that's who, that's who, that I get to do all my work for me here.
And where did that material go?
We brought in a couple thousand loads on the Warrior site.
Chairman, I've got a question for Doug and Mr. Conway. Doug, can this be approved as a borrow pit and follow those rules until the site has enough material removed to be able to consider the site plan for the storage?
Well, that's, by this body, no. Okay, you don't have the authority, the Board of Zoning Appeals would have to do that. But that was kind of the discussion that we had with the applicant and his engineer, was that, you know, it appears to us that at least the immediate use of this property is going to be more of a borrow pit type situation, where you're taking the material and you're bringing it somewhere else. Now, every site that we look at has some amount of spoil that through the development process has to be removed from the site. We expect that. But at the last meeting, we talked a bit about that, and we also both, Mike and I, agreed and said to the commission that we've never seen a site of this size have that much material being taken off the property. This is more than just spoil. I mean, this is being used, and by his own admission, he's using it for other sites. So if somebody were to come and ask me and say, hey, I want to take some material off this property and go put it on another site, we would tell them it's a borrow pit. You know, if he wants to try to take some of the material off and then develop it in the future through a site plan, yes, he could do that, but he would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals first to get approval for the borrow pit. Now, like I said earlier, the amount of material he's looking to excavate off of this site based on that site plan, he couldn't get that through a borrow pit application. You know, I was looking at the regulations here just a little bit after we, that was brought up a little earlier. Borrow pits, they have a minimum of 50 feet setback from all property lines, 150 feet from any residential property line, which is three sides. They can't occupy the pit area, can't occupy more than, or cover more than 25% of the lot area under 10 acres. If it's 10 acres or greater, it can't be more than 10% or 2 and 1/2 acres, whichever is greater. So, you know, he'd be able to get a few acres out of it, but, you know, not the extent of what he's talking about here. So that's, I think, one of his concerns as far as the borrow pit application is concerned.
Now, I just want to stress, he can get many storage warehouses to work on this property. Y'all approved one four years ago. I mean, it's not impossible, it's a challenging piece of property, but, you know, his engineers was able to come up with a plan that didn't include pre-split walls that have to be monitored constantly. So, I mean, it can be developed with many storage. He had like five, no, 10, 10 buildings, and he's going for 12 on this new plan. So this site can be developed without these excessive cuts, and I think that's where Doug and I are having our big issues with, is the excessive cuts on this and calling in a site plan for many storage.
A question for Nick, that probably can't be answered, Nick. They said you build this, and safety seems to be Mike's big concern here. Build this, build it out, five years, falls down, kills somebody, county liable.
This commission has asked those similar questions before regarding approving subdivisions that might have flooding issues. I think the purpose of this body is to listen to your staff and the safety concerns that they have, and to do what you can to the best of your ability to only approve sites that comport with our regulations, and then also provide for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizenry. Now, the legal question that you asked, I think the answer is, generally speaking, these types of decisions are discretionary, and if somebody were to sue the county five years from now from a rock falling down, one, an argument would be that we have immunity because they're discretionary decisions that this body is making, but two, if that didn't get us a win, I think the argument is, well, we're doing our reasonable due diligence here with the questions that are being asked of our staff, and our staff, I think, is appropriately relaying its concerns to this body. Now, in dealing with the approval of this site, again, I think the thing that Mike has stressed is health, safety, welfare, that it can be a warehouse facility under differing conditions and with less grade of cut. And I think that's the message that Mike is getting across.
All right, question. I am not, Mark, you were the developer of the wreck?
That is correct.
With TT. So, to me, I'm not a registered engineer, but I have an engineering background, environmental design. As shown with the deep, nearly 70-foot cut in the back, and also with the quarry right behind it. So you have continual blasting, which could, we don't know, but could have an impact on the sheer face over time. Vibrations perhaps could loosen up rock.
Possibly, but.
We don't know, but possibly.
Right. And the, we talked to the folks at the quarry, and they have blast monitors nearby, and their blast monitor records show that their maximum peak particle velocity is less than 2 inches per second, which is the state requirement. So the amount of vibration that you have, even though we haven't measured it, is likely pretty minimal. It would be felt, but just like any other shot that you see in the area, if you're within relatively close distance, you can feel the ground vibrate, and people get worried about that, but it's still not that big of a vibration, it's just that your body is so sensitive to those types of vibrations that they pick them up.
And you're drilling, your bore report, your bore samples clearly showed that your less desirable stone and dirt mixture is at the top.
That is correct.
Stronger stone is at the bottom.
Yes.
Well, to me, as drawn and as proposed, the optics are bad, and it does, to me, it doesn't pass the smell test. But let me ask you this, this is maybe the most important question. You're a registered engineer.
That is correct.
Back there is a registered engineer. The guy's got your license, you stood up and you swore an oath, the engineer's creed, to protect the general, part of it, it's a long paragraph, but part of it is to protect the general public.
Correct.
Right? And you sign your name on a stamp, you have to think of that creed every day.
That is right.
All right. So based, and Michael did the same thing, Mike Hughes did the same thing, and he's already stressed his concern about the general public. Based on the site plan that we've seen with the sheer or stepped block wall and the catchment area, which doesn't look, according to Mike, is maybe not as wide as it should be, are we protecting, are you willing to sign with your stamp, and is Bill willing to sign with his stamp, protecting the general public with this site plan as drawn?
We have incorporated recommendations that large organizations such as TDOT Incorporated for roadways that are used by many more people than a storage facility. Based on that and the recommendations contained in the report, I'd say yes.
You're still concerned about the distance of the catchment area?
Yes, yes. They're showing drive aisles in that catchment area, which you shouldn't be driving in that.
Shouldn't be in there.
It should be a clear zone that when, if rocks, when they fall, would have an area to collect. And I should say that I'm not an extra on Minsha, but they don't recommend having buildings within 100 feet of a high wall.
Okay, regardless whether it's a quarry or not.
Right, right.
So Mark, let me ask that question again, in being more specific. The fact that you have drivable paved areas for consumers of the storage facility, driving right now in the fall zone or containment zone, based on established guidelines, you're still comfortable with putting your name on a stamp?
My stamp is on my report that includes those recommendations. My stamp is not on the site plan that was prepared, which would include the recommendations that I provided.
So the answer is yes to the report and no to the site plan?
I didn't.
You're not legal.
That's not my site plan.
So Mike has stated that this could be built, maybe with changes in the site plan, get the road out of the danger zone, make the buildings a safe distance from the falling rock. You know, he stated that it's buildable, just not, he doesn't feel this site plan is safe for the general public. I think that's what I heard.
I still have issues, I mean, even if you tweaked, you know, modified the plan to pull everything outside of this catchment area, increase the catchment areas in the back, high walls need to be monitored, they need to be evaluated constantly. I mean, quarries have a safety manager that's, that's their job, is to go around and make sure that if a new crack shows up, it's addressed. If, you know, if a slide happens or something, it's addressed.
I think, I think Mr. Brooks would agree, if he were here, that even in highway maintenance, you monitor those on a periodic basis.
Yes, yes. The state has safety people that goes out and looks for these issues.
For my part, I share the same professional obligations as Mr. Huddleston, Herman, and you as well, and my thinking is in this is, I want someone to be able to develop their property as they would like to do, that can be accomplished here, but I feel like we have safeguards in place as a borrow pit, because you talked about less material being moved. There's been considerations made to make safer buffers in those areas to prevent those kinds of things from happening and an overall safety aspect. So I still think you can accomplish the, what you're after, you just won't be able to generate as much material from that. So for me, I'd rather see the pursuit toward a borrow pit than toward the site plan, because you're still going to be able to accomplish that goal as well. But those safeguards are in place if approved for a borrow pit.
Bill, do you have some comments?
Thank you, Chairman Phillips, and good morning to the Planning Commission. My stamp is on the site plan. We definitely need to move that drive out of the catchment area, and that's an easy adjustment. It was, that area is at the lowest part of the wall, or where the wall would be the least, but it's easy to move the drive out of the catchment area. The only other engineering comments I heard, phase line for the grading, I think you're hearing now that the grading's all to happen at one time, so that's why there's not a phase line. As far as the two downstream structures, we showed, we evaluated one downstream structure, and I'm not sure there is another downstream structure that we can look at if Mike ends up a bench line. And we will make sure that our bench that we show adheres to Mr. Herman's report, I think we showed 10 feet, if it's 15 feet, we'll make sure that's 10 feet, I mean, excuse me, 15 feet. And those were the only engineering comments. I'm awfully glad that you and/or staff required my client to hire a geotechnical engineer. He is a geotechnical engineer that I've known my entire professional career, and I recommend him often when one is needed. So if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Joe?
Sure, Doug, I'm sorry.
As far as the, of course, we had a lot of discussion on this, as far as whether the site plan moves forward, whether it's, what exactly direction do we take as far as this goes? I mean, I think the obvious are in play as far as it can be approved, it can be denied, deferred for further discussion, deliberation, what have you. Another option that you might want to consider as a possibility at least, and Mike alluded to this a little earlier, you can see, and the site plan that Mike's got up on this big screen right now, you can see that he's got Phase 1 and Phase 2 built, or shown on the site plan. Of course, now, like you said, you know, the grading plan wasn't necessarily shown that way, but another possibility, if you were inclined to offer some sort of conditional improvement to this, might be looking at just the material and just. improvement to this, might be looking at just the material and just the buildings for Phase One. And Phase Two would be kind of at a future. That would include all the grading and everything else that they wanted to do. There's still a pretty substantial amount of cut, even in the first phase, but the real, the deeper walls, if you will, aren't until you get further into the back. So that's an option to consider, at least. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just wanting to throw that out there as a possibility. I think there still need to be some tweaks to the plan, as Bill Huddleston was just saying, as Mike was stating a little earlier. Of course, if that is the plan, we'd want to see what the grading plan for Phase One would look like relative to what Phase Two would look like. There'd have to be some tweaks there as well. So again, not necessarily advocating it one way or the other, just throwing it out there as another option as well.
I still want to raise my hand and say I have issues with a pre-split high wall. Even if you move the buildings and the catchment area in there, you're still showing, you know, this is an area for parking back here, RVs, boats, trailers, cars, whatnot. So people are, you know, they're in this zone. And I still have a lot of issues with the safety.
And I would say, just to read how I said, I mean, my concerns are shared with him, or his concerns are shared with me, I should say. We both see eye to eye on that. So I wasn't trying to say, you know, just approve Phase One because all this other goes away. I mean, the concerns are still there, just as they are for Mike.
You can.
So on the site plan, we have barriers put in place. There's a catchment basement, basin area, and we'll have barriers in place on that to keep, basically, we want to keep people away from the wall. We're not concerned with any type of large fragments falling off the wall. That's not our concern. You know, concern is safety of the people. You know, I don't want to get sued. You know, the geotechnical report is more than likely going to give me a better insurance premium on the storage facility. We're taking every step we can to be safe. You know, I would want to, you know, camp out underneath this wall if possible. You know, that's how I feel about this, the site plan. I think we've designed it correctly. We've done the studies. We're taking every safety precaution that we possibly can. And I think the site plan reflects that and the work we've put into this. And also, I'd like to address a comment from earlier, as far as the work that was done on site. In December, I had a state permit issued. We were under the impression that we could take material from my Site A to B. Once we found out that was not the case, once I talked to Doug, I immediately pulled the equipment off-site. And so, you know, I'm not here to break rules. I'm here to follow and be safe.
And that state permit was for your old site, not the current site? So...
It was for the original 7.4 acres. Yes, sir.
And you still have to have pre-construction meeting through our office, land disturbance permits, and erosion control measures up before you start doing all this stuff, and approve the site plan?
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy when Mike's happy. So for me to be fair, Mike's got to put his stamp of approval on this. And I don't know whether we need to send it back, let them get together. If we did send it back, could the individuals be able to remove some of the rock now? What do we have to do, allow him to do that while you're working this out?
As far as removing material from the site right now, you mean?
That's right.
He, well, since we haven't really worked out what he's, what exactly this is going to look like at this point, if he wanted to start removing material from the site, I think what he would need to do is go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a borrow pit application. Now, it's all kind of interlinked, in a sense, because what the work he does there is going to affect the eventual work he wants to do on the site plan. So it's all going to have to kind of coordinate. But, you know, if we were to either, if you, the commission were there to defer or deny this, he still wouldn't be allowed to take any rock off. You know, he would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a borrow pit. Now, that application could be for upwards of six months, with the ability for the Planning Director to issue a three-month extension to that. So, I mean, that's, that's a thought. You know, if he wanted to pursue that now, to do a BZA application, he'd probably be looking at, at the earliest at this point, June, because our next deadline's coming up, and the BZA meets next, well, two weeks from now. So it wouldn't be overnight kind of thing, I guess, to answer your question.
I just want to stress again, he can still develop the site, still put in 12 mini-storage buildings, but, you know, there needs to be a reduction in the amount of cut. And he'll still generate a lot of material. With the previous plan, I mean, it was tremendous amount of cut for that. I mean, so, I mean, it won't be as much as he had in mind, but I think there's ways we can meet in the middle and have, you know, not pre-split walls, but sloped, you know, graded walls that are secure, not as deep. So I just think that he could still develop this as a mini-storage warehouse, is what it's presented, but without the deep, deep cuts in here.
I'm sorry? Yes.
So for the new, in addition to the second property to the west, we've actually increased the building footprint on this site plan by almost 2%. We've lowered the lot coverage by about 4%. And this yields us approximately just shy of four times outdoor storage capacity, which is, in this location, is going to be very crucial. You know, our community is underserved in outdoor storage capacity, based off the, you know, hotel-style city storage developments. And that was to go on this site, and that's why I acquired the property to the west, to increase the outdoor storage area. And we do have a larger footprint on the storage building. So we've actually come on this site plan and increased the storage capacity in the buildings. And most importantly, we have a larger outdoor area, which is going to serve this facility very well. So that was the design behind this site plan.
And if I may, I don't think anybody's doubting that part of it. It's like Mike said, there's no reason you couldn't still develop the site. You can still get all that you're just talking about without cutting the back wall over 50 feet. I mean, I think that's where our biggest concern is. You know, it's not that you can't develop the site. I mean, the fact that you're getting that increase in floor area and decreasing footprint and all that, the things that you just said, has nothing to do with the amount of cut you're taking off of that. You know, it's not, one's not dependent on the other. So it could still be done in such a way to get all that you just said, and not have near the amount, near the amount of that kind of cut coming off that property.
Thank you.
Mike, could you go over what other elements you said were not incorporated from the Geotech report into this plan?
I think they recommend a wider bench on here. Let me zoom out a little bit. They're showing a 10-foot bench, and I think the report recommended a 15. And that's, you know, the bench to catch the, what's called talus. It's the rock that falls and collects. And you got to be able to get up there and get equipment to scoop that material out. If you leave that talus in place, it essentially allows more rock to become a projectile and shoot farther out. So, you know, that's one thing. They're showing a fence at the bottom. Yeah, that's probably not a bad idea, but I think we need a fence at the top, too, to keep somebody from falling, if you were to allow this. It's not specifically mentioned in the, in the Geotech report. Let me go back. Let's see. Hold on just a second. So, you know, the detail says 10-foot, but you've got to be able to get equipment up there to remove that material. Drainage is a key item. You don't want water collecting at the base or the face of the wall. You got to be able to drain it away. And I think they've addressed that. But rock walls are, it's a continual maintenance. I mean, you just don't build it and walk away from it. You have to have, like I said, the Rogers Group right behind it's got probably a staff of people that go around and check these on a daily basis. So you just can't build it and walk away from it. So, you know, slope and the overburden and the weathered rock zone, I'd like to see more of that, instead of a second pre-split wall, you know, because looking at the material that came out of the bore holes, it's, it's got some issues with it. And I know there's ways around it, but you just can't build it and walk away from it and assume it's going to be good forever.
Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, question. Go back to the cut, the TDOT cut slide. And tell me, refresh everybody's memory. With the current site plan, approximately, what is the height of the cut face that they're proposing?
They have, I think it's a stepped, but I think the deepest cut, if I remember correctly, was around 55, maybe a little bit more, feet in the back. Looking at, this is an image from the Rogers Group. This is 57 feet right here, measured vertically. The height of this truck, or this front-end loader, I should say, is 20 feet tall. So that's essentially their cut right there.
Talked about, you'd be okay if they took less fill and left the back of the property at a higher elevation. What, do you have a comfort level? If they, if they came back and said, okay, we're only going to do a, pick a number, 25-foot, 30-foot, what is your comfort?
The previous plan was a 20-foot cut with two-to-one side slopes, stabilized side slopes, that are not vertical walls, but side slopes that could be engineered to be secure. I mean, they're not perfect, but they're, they're a lot safer, in my opinion, than a pre-split wall.
Right now, it's about 55 feet is what they're proposing. All right. And somebody, somebody help me out. How tall is the ceiling? About 40 feet? 30? So if this is 30, add another 25 feet on top of that. What you're saying, you'd be more comfortable if they had something about as tall as this ceiling?
But laid back? Yes, sir.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to deny, as, as shown on this current site plan. And my basis is on the health and safety of the public. And if they'd like to come back and modify their site plan, I would suggest they do that. But as shown and as presented, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Does deny, does not, does deny let them not come back next month or something with deferral? Which, does it, don't, I mean, it's...
Well, okay, let's, yeah, the six months comes into play with rezonings and Board of Zoning Appeal applications. If this is denied, and I'm looking at the site plan application information right now in the zoning ordinance, I'm not aware of anything in here that says if a site plan is denied, that it can't immediately come back. Now, there is a provision in this ordinance that says that the Planning Commission shall approve, approve of conditions, or deny within 90 days of a submit of a complete application. Now, deferrals can work in there if the applicant agrees to a deferral. I don't think that becomes an issue at that point. But if he just says, I want a decision right now, then I think denial would be probably the course of action that you would want to take. But as far as, is there a timeframe when it could come back? There's not. That's more on Board of Zoning Appeal than rezoning applications, not so much for site plans.
At this point, we've got a motion to deny. I'd like a second before we get into a lot of discussion on this. Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny. Now, discussion, Lee.
I was going to offer a second, but at the tail end, so...
My bad. I'm sorry.
Worked professionally over the years with Mr. Huddleston and Mr. Herman, and they do exceptional work, and they always take into account safety and health in everything that they do. However, my, my vote for this denial would be based on it needs to follow the borrow pit process. It's there for a reason. It has safeguards in place. The ultimate goal can still be achieved. The ultimate goal of that mini-storage in a similar look and a similar fashion can still be achieved. This needs to go through the borrow pit.
The way it's currently drawn out.
The way it's currently shown. And those, I think a lot of those safety elements will be incorporated in that as to how much material can be removed and how much buffer space is allowed. So that's the basis for my joining in that denial of the site plan.
Thank you, Lee. Other questions or comments? Once again, we have a motion and a second to deny the site plan approval for burnt knob self-storage. Call the roll, please, Gal. This is a motion to deny, so an affirmative vote would be for denial.
Charlotte P. Chip Penyon.
Yes.
Greg Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogel. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush. Curtis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Aye.
Carrys.
Motion to deny, Carrys. Thank you. Staff reports, any other business?
No, sir. I don't have anything. Mike, did you have anything?
I've taken up enough of your time.
Our next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for the 11th of May, and that will be in this room, 6:00 PM, once again, on Monday, May the 11th. Anyone have anything else? Thank you. We had some discussion that, once again, is meaningful for the county. A lot of times, it's easy to make a decision that affects the county in sometimes a negative way sometime in the future. And I applaud this commission for looking out for those type of decisions, because sometimes what we do gets us in trouble for what we want to do at sometime in the future. Good job. Thank you for your patience, your time, your attendance. We're adjourned.